All right, it's 5:30 PM. We'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, here in the boardroom. We could have roll call, please, Tammy?
Jacqueline Gremler.
Here.
Nubs Ashbeck.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Linda Yangling. Walt Brew.
Here.
Chad Krueger.
Here.
Ron Ledgerd.
Here.
Kendra Oshkine.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here.
You'll join me. Stand, face the flag for our Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event, and professional conduct is the expectation for all of attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. First on our agenda is a public comments to the board. I did not receive any comment forms. Tammy, Shannon? All right, we will move right into board recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize first Mrs. Heather Carr for her outstanding work in building positive relationships with students and effectively reducing negative behaviors at K. Goodrich. Her dedication to understanding and connecting with each student has created a safe and loving learning environment for all. Heather has implemented a bridge room, they call it, the zone, as a way to support students when their little bodies need extra time to get adjusted to the school day and learning expectations. Her ability to establish trust and build genuine relationships with students has led to a significant decrease in disciplinary issues and an increase in student engagement and success. Her commitment to the well-being and success of every student is truly commendable, greatly appreciated. Thank you for your hard work and dedication, Heather.
Not after today.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. I want to just say that it takes a village, and it isn't just me. So I did Heather and all Kate because it isn't just one person. It takes a lot.
Next, we at the board would like to recognize the Comprehensive School Mental Health Team consisting of Tricia Dieter, Tricia Kubicek, Ally Libby, Debbie Mollendorf, Von Saunders, Trina Kounuski, and Laura Forster. These individuals are members of the MAPS Comprehensive School Mental Health Academy team. They have worked tirelessly this year, participating in monthly virtual meetings and three training sessions in Oshkosh. The goal of this team was to assess the quality of MAPS School Mental Health System components and use improvement cycles to make effective changes. As a result of their diligent work, the MAPS Mental Health Matters Alliance was launched, as well as the district's Social Emotional Learning Committee to address social and emotional needs of both students and staff. The work will continue into the 2023-2024 school year. Tricia, would you like to say a little something about the group? Or Ally would? Oh, that's nice. See how that works? Well, we could keep going. Roll call. How about this?
Debbie is the leader.
Okay. Debbie, would you please say a few words?
No, Debbie's concise. Yes, concise.
Okay. I would just like to thank, I've joined the team the latest in this effort, but again, I just want to thank the team and let you know you have a very dedicated group of individuals here who care about students and are looking for ways to address the growing mental health needs of students of all ages within the district. So kudos to your team and kudos to the district.
Next, the board would like to recognize our departing student board representative, Isaiah Ralph, and our returning board representative, Brooke Rudai, for their year's service. I put you on the spot again.
Do you want to?
Yeah, tell me a little bit of what you learned here the last two years while joining us as a student rep for the board.
Well, I'm on the spot a little bit here, but I just like to thank the board for the opportunity and just like, it's really helped me like mature through high school with like public speaking skills and like preparation of the things I have to say and just like giving speeches and stuff. It's just really helped me mature with that through high school, so thank you for that.
What are you doing moving on?
I'm going to the University of Notre Dame to study business analytics.
At this time, I would turn it over to Tricia Dieter for the announcement of Isaiah's replacement for next year's student school board representative for 2023, 2024, and beyond.
Stand right here. This is Max Black. He is a sophomore at Merrill High School, a very well-rounded individual, and I think will be a perfect replacement for Isaiah. Max, not only involved in athletics, but several co-curricular activities, so he will have a good pulse in the high school to bring in what's happening at the high school. So look forward to Max next year.
Just to kind of talk a little about why he wanted to do this, or you know, he was selected to do this, it was very honored, but give him a little opportunity here.
Yeah, when she asked me, I accepted pretty quickly, and she was kind of, she seemed kind of surprised by that. I think that's what she was expecting.
No.
But I guess I just need it, like the opportunity that it is where I can, like Isaiah said, build those skills to talk in front of larger amounts of people and just become more involved with everything. My brother leave, I did it as well, so that kind of encouraged me to do it a little bit too, but hopefully I can do just half the good job.
Thank you and welcome, Max. This time, we'll give you a little bit of a taste of what you'll be in for here in the next couple of months. We'll start with our board representative reports from Isaiah and Brooke.
All right. So the Otto Bacher Track Meet was on May 5th. Otto Bacher is a meet that all the track athletes look forward to because it's an opportunity to run in front of a home crowd under the lights on a Friday night. The team competed very well as a whole, and the girls' team was even able to get first place. As a track athlete, I can say that some of my best memories as an athlete have come from this meet, and I know the rest of the team, including Max, feels the same way. The National Honor Society induction was on May 1st. A group of current sophomores and juniors were inducted into the club, and it was a great chance for the students to be recognized for their hard work in school, volunteering, and also leadership. The senior celebration will be returning again this year. It will be happening the night of graduation and will include activities such as games, prizes, and even a hypnotist. It will be a fun chance for the senior class to be together and have a fun night one last
I'll try to do half as good as Isaiah did. Seeing as the school year is coming to an end, things are starting to wrap up for clubs at Merrill High School as well. On top of the band awards that were, I think that was on Monday, on Monday, this Monday, band members were recognized for their dedication and hard work as they were involved in Merrill Band. Merrill High School has many clubs that will be having different meetings at the end throughout this month as they will be joined together with snacks, and they will receive rewards, awards, and recognize specific students for going above and beyond. This is a very fun way to thank everyone for volunteering their time and commitment for various clubs. May has also been a very busy week for our students that are taking AP classes. During the week of May 2nd through May 9th, eight different AP tests were taken by our students. AP Psychology, AP US History, and AP Lang and Composition were just a few. Our students worked very hard to study and prepare themselves for these tests as they take them in hopes of earning college credit for those specific classes.
Thank you, Isaiah and Brooke. Did any board members have any follow-up questions or clarifying questions? All right. Once again, thank you, Isaiah and Brooke, for joining us and adding that dimension to our boardroom. We do appreciate that. This time on our agenda, we do have administrative reports. Turn it over to Shannon here for, to go through those for us.
Thank you, Kevin. The first administrative report this evening is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report. Glenda Oghensky is here this evening. Her report focuses on district state mentorship assessment processes. Are there any questions or comments for Glenda? Next up is the Pine River School for Young Learners Report. Covers a lot of ground, as is often the case with that report. Ryan is here to answer any questions or address any comments that he may have. NFC is the Food Service Report, focusing on participation reported at the Board Bites. Laura is not here this evening, but perhaps I could answer questions or for those on the record if you have any. The Director of Special Ed-Pupil Services Report focuses on MAC and the MAC Home Maids and Beyond Crayons of Peter Grant. Karen Baker is here this evening, if you have any questions or comments that she could Hearing none. The Director of Business Services Report is quite lengthy and has a preliminary draft budget, some summer projects, open enrollment information, et cetera, et cetera. Kelly Strike is not here, so I'll be pinching her own number of subjects tonight, but if you have any questions or comments, I could address those as well. The Director of Billings and Grounds Transportation Update, focusing on building construction updates, summer maintenance projects. I think that specific item is later on in the agenda. Capital improvement, project safety, security, et cetera. Dale's here this evening, if you have any questions or comments for Dale. And then finally is the Superintendent's Report. Kind of focused on facilities study. We have an open, we have a meeting on next Tuesday, the 23rd, which is a workshop for the board with Myron and Bray and looking forward to that. And then kind of some update on some different higher rings of the board, as higher positions for some administration. So if you have any questions or comments on that, one of them is actually out of the record later on this evening now. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. We're next to committee reports or actions. Tammy, if you'll pass out the committee appointments, so support and membership committee appointments for 2023, 2024, descriptions of the committees. I work to assign board members to each committee, as well as then Shannon puts the finishing touches on any members of the district that should be also appointed to the committees. That is an annual thing we do after the election and organizational meeting, and we do go through that each year. As far as you'll note, that once that is, my work and Shannon's is put together on there, we do have a motion to approve those. Anyone who's willing to make that motion? Jacqueline?
I recommend a motion to approve the appointments made by the superintendent for committee membership of the 2023-2024 school year.
Motion by Jacqueline. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next, we will go to our Facilities Committee, attached were the draft minutes from the May 3 committee meeting. I am the current chair, and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions this evening for our Facilities Committee? Any questions for our Facilities Committee? Hearing none, we will move to Finance Human Resources Committee. The draft minutes from the May 10th committee meeting were shared. Members of the Finance Human Resources Committee are available to discuss any topics there. Any questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee? Any questions for Finance HR? Hearing none, we'll move down to CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services. The draft minutes from the May 10th committee meeting were shared as well. Any questions for members of our CTP Committee? Any questions or discussion for our CTP Committee? Hearing none, we'll move down to unfinished business. The first item, there's consideration of the board members' requests to review policies and guidelines for board members to be allowed to attend and participate in meetings virtually. We had asked, we put this back on the agenda, asked for some data, I guess, as to what that would look like to either fix the room for full-time use or if we had to take it down and reset up. So we did have a topic summary sheet put together by Shannon. If you'd highlight that a little bit and talk to us on that.
Yeah, so a board member made the request that we take a look at the subject to see if we want to allow individual board members to attend virtually in cases of emergencies and those kind of things, surgeries, or where they're unable to physically attend for a short period of time. And so we looked at it as a topic summary sheet looks, points out, looked at logistically from a technology standpoint, legal, policy, financial, those kind of things. The first point shows that we can indeed do it. We've done it in the past, including in the auditorium. To do it on a temporary basis or as needed basis, we would have our techs come and bring them on a monitor, microphone, camera, they'll pick up. Afford the board member the opportunity to attend virtually at Google meets, and that would cost us a couple hundred bucks every meeting, the tear-down setup and have some available type of. Andrew Kaler informed me that we could do this permanently for somewhere in the neighborhood of $5,000, you know, to have the equipment set up and bring it in, which I make a comment given the, potentially the status of our facilities, that might be something to consider, our facility study. However, that equipment can be pretty, pretty easy. I'm not the guy moving it, so I'll do it for the, he said, pretty easy. We have no policy addressing it. We do have policy that addresses what we do when none of us can make it because there's an emergency, a pandemic, most kind of things, but we don't have any policy yet this time that addresses that. It is legal to do, and as that last bullet point points out, it is actually quite common. We asked around about the CSAT meeting last week, and while not everybody was there, everybody that was there allows this. So that's the information that I was able to provide, and I will go back again.
Fair enough. That was the information that we asked, what was, as a board, what was the cost? Had some discussion last month leading into that, not only from a financial perspective, but what does that look like? I think the one thing we weren't sure of is probably early on, the little additional expense in either model, if it was the piece-by-piece setup or longer-term setup, there may be a little bit of a staffing piece that wasn't put in there where someone, Andrew or someone like Andrew would be here to monitor that. I don't know that that was anyone's concern. I think we were looking to total what that number was, and that makes sense for us to do, so I'll open the floor for discussion and/or a motion if someone would like to make a motion or think it's a sample. So I'll open the floor to board members. Nubs?
If we allow it, what about closed session? Would we, we'd have to have a policy on that. Because closed session, you don't know the security of where they're at for somebody else.
Yeah, as my topic summary sheet pointed out, some districts do allow closed session. I advise against that, but isn't, you pointed out.
But you have to have a policy on that according to, I'm just using the example of ADRC. We allow people in closed session, but we have a policy where they have to, you know, basically swear that they're all in the room and nobody, you know? So that's my only question.
Paul?
The idea that you're going to be called at 10 o'clock in the morning, 11 o'clock in the morning, where everyone's saying, "I can't make the meeting today, I want to be set up for virtual." Now you've got to scramble to get somebody here. Could this result in an overtime situation for staffing to be at the meeting to do this? You mentioned a $5,000 price tag. Doesn't seem like a lot of money, but we're in the middle of a budget crunch. We laid people off. We got rid of jobs. Am I right in thinking you make the meetings as you can? We shouldn't be spending money like this to have a virtual meeting. I'm not a virtual meeting fan, you probably understand that. I don't like virtual meetings. There's confusion, there's problems hearing, and there's problems identifying who's trying to talk and why they're trying to talk. That's my two cents here.
Ron?
Board of Public Works has virtual meetings. You don't know when they're going to get in. You start the next sentence, and now they're jumping in. You don't know who it is. You know, it's just a voice. I would say if you're going to do it, then the person that can't, the board member that can't make it, then would not get paid to cover the cost of, some of the cost of keeping tech here and the setup and all that, and then not allow virtual. That would be my thinking.
Thank you, Ron. Brett?
Make a motion to table this topic indefinitely.
Sir? Motion by Brett, second by Paul. Table this topic indefinitely. Any discussion or questions on that motion? Questions or discussion on the motion on that topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the second reading for staff handbooks for 2023, 2024. Since we did go through that last month, is there any questions that anyone had? Otherwise, I would look for a motion.
I will point out on Kelly's topic summary sheet, there are two updates. One is that since the first week, one is that currently I have a lead technician position, which is a $4 an hour increase when that person serves in that role. Because of the market and the nature of the job, you're taking the, when that person serves in that role, or adding it just a flat $2 increase. And that position already exists on the Facebook. The other thing is that we're still trying to clean up some activities, salaries that are affiliated with activities, including, or specifically the fall playing musical, so that'll be coming back at a later time. The rest is all included on the list.
Paul?
I move to approve the second reading and approve the 2023-2024 teacher and support staff handbook.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Paul, second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic? Jen?
If they're still cleaning it up, should we, you have the second reading on? Wait till all the cleanups are done?
So the cleanups will come individually like last month, you can raise your voice. So Kelly's going through the process right now of determining largely what positions are needed. You know, we have, I'm just making these up, we have a hearing cast your person, you have a music person, you have these kind of things, it's kind of like, what's the best use of our arms? Is there a mechanism changes going for it? Those are not on the existing handbook charts. It's a little bit more separate. But that's a good question.
Additional questions or discussion on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move down to the portion of the agenda for Board of Education business, and we will start with the approval of the Head Start Supplemental Funds. The topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinovich. There is a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Jacqueline?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2023-2024 application for state Head Start Supplemental Funds.
Motion by Jacqueline, a second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. You have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a revision of evidence-based COVID-19 mitigation policy for the Pine River School for Young Learners. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the revised Head Start evidence-based COVID-19 mitigation policy.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of Merrill High School Dishwasher Replacement. The topic summary sheet provided by Dale Bergman. A recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve dishwasher replacement for Merrill High School as presented.
Motion by Ron, second, second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the summer maintenance projects for 2023, 2024. The attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from the Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the summer maintenance projects for 2023, 2024 as funding is available.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Jen?
With the facility study still out there and we not knowing what we're doing, do some of these affect schools that are areas where we might not need to do it in the future? You know, I mean, so I don't know, it's just miscellaneous concrete around the district, blacktop around the district.
Yeah, so I'll let Dale speak to it. I believe like the concrete and blacktop are truly like safety issues. What kind of, to that point?
You know, I'm trying, where I'm coming from.
Absolutely. We're not looking at anything obvious affected by the facility's assessment, but there are some things that just roll over year after year, like concrete repairs, asphalt repairs. As you see, our model here is down at the pad, and there's a bunch of tripping hazards around the district that goes at Cape and Ice Way, but we know there's going to be little to any effect by the facility's assessment. So those are areas that are targeted. But we know there's going to be little to any effect by the facilities assessment. So those are areas that I'm targeting for, you know. We're into some initial sidewalks, um, coming out of the student parking lot of high school, create a better funnel across for students in the morning. Create pickup lines. So those items like that, they're probably first for safety and security issues. And some of those are products in there that roll year after year. That's what I'm using there. One of the good things that we talked about is the goal is not to get Fund forty-six, but you're doing this list. You have a little kind of prioritizing. And really the focus is on kind of like the high as far as the safety. That's probably the best way to play. So, um, I would expect that we will not be doing any of this list. I think that's probably a dream. Yep.
Yeah, I, I get it. I mean, I just wonder, I guess they'd want to be doing, say, pro-Jeff, we do something with Jeff's and then all of a sudden after we're all done, we decide to get rid of it.
That's a fair question.
Why have you just spent fifty thousand dollars and such and such?
Yeah.
It's alike, I think.
Thank you, Chad. Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any additional discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Prairie River Middle School Course Description. Attached was a topic summary sheet. Is a topic summary sheet from Diane Gage. A recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four course descriptions for Prairie River Middle School.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Merrill Adult Diplomacy Academy MATA calendar. Topic summary sheet was provided by Megan Keltzer and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion on this topic this evening? Nubs?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four MATA calendar.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Jaclyn?
Why are the days different? Do you know what I mean? Like it's, and it's so, it's like by two, you know what I mean? So the instructional days are ours?
Yeah, um, because of the, um, alignment of the needs of that program, they swapped out the instructional days for the, for the Saturdays. So the, the total days are aligned. They just go year round. Generally speaking, three weeks on, three weeks off. And that's been that model for, uh, fifteen years, fourteen years.
Any additional questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of open enrollment applications. We do have a topic summary sheet or memo from Karen Baker. We would look for a motion first on. We have two motions, so I would look for someone willing to make the first motion, please.
I recommend a motion to approve the three hundred and five new students open enrolling to MAPS and also approve the five hundred and sixty-four open enrolled students continuing in MAPS.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do you have any abstentions? Motion carries. There is a second motion in regards to open enrollment applications. Someone prepared to make that motion this evening?
I recommend a motion to approve the forty-three new students indicating open enrollment out of MAPS and also approve the hundred and forty-two open enrolled students continuing to open enroll out of MAPS.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic?
Is that a, is that, that's an increase, forty-three more students are enrolling out?
Correct. On top of, yes.
New, new requests.
Those are, um, those are new requests, yes.
So our total then from the top of five hundred and sixty forward to five hundred and thirty-two, five hundred and twenty-two.
That total, that total on top is, is going to change or is that?
Those are two separate. So the top are people opening early into MAPS, the bottom is open rolling out.
But those leaving, does that affect, that affects the number somewhere?
That'll affect the number, yes, when it comes to the count. Now, keep in mind that when families apply for open enrollment naturally next month, I mean, I have a presentation for you all for this, that each family can do, pick three schools. And so now when we go into June, it will be that time where a family will let us know whether they're going to come in or go out, part of this to another district. Nothing's in stone until it comes to the third Friday college.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
Does that just include the new ones or is it for the old ones too? Both?
Any additional discussion or questions on this topic or the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Human Growth and Development Resources for grades K through twelve. Attached topic summary sheet. This is from Glenda Ojinski. Recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the Human Growth and Development Updates for grades K through twelve.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, on the H G and D Committee. A lot of hard work was put into that. So thank you, Glenda and your team. You assembled for that committee, make that possible. Next on our agenda is the Social Emotional Learning, or SEL curriculum licensing PK through twelve with a topic summary sheet from Karen Baker and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Recommend a motion to approve the seven mindsets, mindset SEL curriculum licensing quota in the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars for implementation in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? We have a second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Kendra?
I would just like to add a friendly amendment, um, that we note that it's from a grant, that the funding for it's from a grant for the topic summary sheet.
You all right to have that on there?
Okay.
Ron, should, with grant dollars?
Thank you.
Think so, is the question.
We did, we did that in the meeting.
All right, any additional questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you to Karen Baker, your team putting everything together and getting this brought forward to the board as well. Next on our agenda is the approval of Security Internet Safety Filter Solution Contract Service. Topic summary sheet was provided by Andrew Kaylin, and we have a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have someone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I re, excuse me, I move the approval of the Contracted Services for Securities Internet Safety Filter. So safety filter solution that will be paid out of the tech budget each year.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or topic this evening? Any discussion on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Annual Food Service Contract Addendum, a topic summary sheet provided by Dr. Kelly Strike and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year addendum of the Tyler Food Service Contract as presented.
We have a motion by Ron, we have a second by Nubs. Do we have any discussion, clarifying questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion on the motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Athletic Training Contract with attached topic summary sheet from Scott Harson. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a, anyone willing to make a motion on the topic this evening? Nubs?
I recommend the approval of the Bone and Joint Training Service Contract as presented.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Chad?
He's got on here, Bone and Joint will, will have no charge if we occur thirty-plus hours of coverage. Does that, and?
I can ask for that. So, um, so no charge total, is that the best way to say that?
So we have to get thirty-plus hours and then?
So if it's one hour, it's no charge. If it's forty hours, it's no charge.
Okay.
The, the other one had, um, there was a charge over thirty hours.
Yeah, well, well, it says twenty after twenty-five hours.
Any additional discussion or questions or anything you'd like, else you'd like to add on that, Shannon or Tricia? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is the Approval of Support Staff Reductions Enforced Due to Financial Reasons. Topic summary sheet provided by Dr. Kelly Strike. There is a recommended motion. Someone is willing to make the motion. No motion. Paul?
I recommend, I recommend a motion to eliminate the support staff positions held by Kajai Merza and Nakasha Pollard effectively twenty-six, twenty-four. I apologize for the pronunciation.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Any discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Policy Review at Committee Meetings. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray. Recommended motion from both, I believe, the Finance Human Resources Committee as well as CTP. Anyone willing? Is there a motion on that? Do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, there's a motion on that. I believe that should include CTP as well.
Okay.
Well, we didn't, because those motions were a little different. The finance HR had added on to their, theirs.
So this motion just includes CTP as well?
Yeah.
I can make that. Paul? I move, excuse me, move the committee to take off the standing agenda item and no longer do the regular review of policies. Committees will only review policies on an as-needed basis. The Policy Committee should conduct a regular review of policies, but not reviewing the Miola updates that clearly needs.
Second.
Motion by Paul, a second by Brett. Any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a request to change the September twentieth, twenty twenty-three regular board meeting date due to a conflict. There is a conflict, I think we caught this last year a little bit later in the calendar. So giving a little more heads up that the fall was, the superintendent's conference happens to fall on September twentieth. Looking to, um, make arrangements now instead of waiting. So anyone willing to make a motion for the, uh, change of date for our September meeting? Nubs?
I move to change the September twenty, two thousand twenty-three regular board meeting to September twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? We have a second by Paul. Any question or discussions on that motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Friends of the Forest donation of the Merrill School Forest Pond Shelter. The topic summary sheet and donation form was provided from Dale Bergman. This is coming to the board because the policy seventy-two thirty has a twenty-five hundred dollar limit set. Otherwise it has to come separately to the board for approval. Facility Committee has recommended a motion. Someone willing to make that motion this evening or another one on this topic? Nubs?
I recommend, uh, to approve the donation of funds from the Friends of the Forest Valley that approximately forty thousand for the shelter to be constructed by the pond at the Merrill School Forest.
A motion by Nubs, do we have a second? We have a second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Merrill Aqua J Swim Team Donation for a Six Lane Scoreboard. The donation form and cover letter uh, is, has been provided. Also under policy seventy-two thirty, any donation. Also under policy 7230, any donation over the $2,500 limit set must be approved separately. There is a recommended motion from our facilities committee. If someone willing to make a motion on the topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the donation of funds from Merrill Aqua Swim Team valued at $9,025 for a six lane scoreboard to provide a scoreboard in remote areas during meets as well as for outdoor events.
A motion from Ron, do we have a second? A second by Kendra. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Merrill Foundation donation for the senior celebration. There was a cover memo and a donation form provided by Tricia Dieter. Same thing we've been talking about, policy 7230 states any donation over $2,500 should be brought to the board separately, this is the case here. Looking, we do have a recommended motion, if anyone is willing to make that motion? Chad?
I motion to approve the donation of funds from the Merrill Foundation valued at $3,000 for the Merrill High School seniors celebration.
Motion by Chad, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Habitat for Humanity donation for the Nest at Merrill High School. Cover memo and the donation form is presented by Tricia Dieter. Policy 7230 is also at play here with the $2,500 limit, since it exceeds that. We do have a recommended motion, if someone's willing to make the motion on this topic. Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the donation of funds from the Habitat for Humanity valued at $5,000 for the Nest at the Merrill High School.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Habitat for Humanity donation for the Nest at the Prairie River Middle School. Cover memo and donation form was provided by Diane Gage. Policy 7230 with these $2,500 limit is in play here also. So it came to the board separately, there is a recommended motion for this donation, if someone is willing to make... Go ahead, Kendra.
I make a motion to approve the donation of funds from the Habitat for Humanity valued at $5,000 for the Nest at the Prairie River Middle School.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to thank all the different organizations that have made donations. They are much appreciated by the school district for all of the different causes, so... Thank you for everyone in our community that has, has done so. We do appreciate that. Next on here is a carryover, I did not catch that the technical correction to policy 9800 was handled last month, so we will just move right on to the personnel report. Hireings, recruitments, and resignations or retirements with the personnel report updated by Dr. Kelly Strike. There is a recommended motion, someone is willing to make motion, personnel report. Paul?
I move to approve the attached personnel report contingent upon the satisfaction of the appropriate negotiated damages for resignations if applicable.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, or I ask for a motion. I'll ask if anyone would like anything pulled to be dealt with separately from our consent agenda.
I abstained from the April 19th meeting.
All right, we will come back to that, Nubs, but thank you, make that note. Hearing, no one looking to pull anything, I would ask for a motion. Ron?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C, which include MAPS of the April 19th, 2023, April 24th, 2023, and May 4th, 2023 meetings. Claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $3,232,670.70 and donations totaling $2,755.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions?
I abstained from April 19th, we...
All right, so I read to the abstentions for April 19th as well as Nubs, the motion carries. Items for future meetings, purpose of the agenda item is to identify any topics to visit or revisit, any discussions related to strategic planning or board agreements. We do have a running list, and I think we're narrowing that down, and we will even get into that a little further next week with some facility study work and some other things that way. We have worked on a few this week and a couple others in committees such as Future of Jefferson, informing our community how the board operates, virtual option we worked on tonight for board members, as well as some committee work on the junior achievement, what that would take to be put back in the district. Are there any other items that someone feels we're missing off of our, our list at this time? You certainly can recommend them at a committee level or at the, for the board of the whole to go through things. So if anyone has any ideas, you can mention them tonight or wait for the committee time. All right, I will look to hear from more things for upcoming committee meetings. Keep in mind with the committee assignments, we will be selecting committee chairs at the next meeting for that as when that committee convenes next. Keep that in mind, on the agenda here is a reminder of tomorrow morning's scheduled radio program. Epps is on the radio every Thursday. Tomorrow, Shannon and I will be on there at approximately 15:00 AM on Blue J 730 radio station, summarizing and going through tonight's meeting and district topics. Future meetings include special board meeting for the Bray Myron Workshop. I believe that's Tuesday, May 23rd at 5:30 PM in the boardroom. Our CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets on Wednesday, June 14th, 4:30 PM in the boardroom, followed immediately by Finance Human Resources Wednesday, June 14th, no sooner than 5:00 PM in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy's governance board meeting Thursday, June 15th at 12:45, they meet virtually. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, June 21st, 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. I believe this Friday is also Bridges Virtual Academy's graduation at the high school auditorium, followed by the Wednesday, May 24th, is the high school or senior awards and scholarship gathering, banquet event, and that Friday would then be the May 26th graduation commencement ceremony. I believe that starts at 6:00 PM Merrill High School Field House. That would be the events I can think of. This time, I look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Nubs, do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Adjourn at 6:31 PM. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you all.